Please be seated. Good evening and welcome. For those who don't know, you might not know me. I'm Matt Gladstone, Chief Executive of City Council. I'm not Gillian, she retired a couple of months ago. So I'm very pleased to be here. It's a real honour and privilege to look at the civic awards for 2021/22. We will be presenting a number of awards tonight, presented by the mayor, and we want to go through those in turn. We're going to start the evening with the civic awards for 2021/22, and they were appraised and selected by the honours panel and approved at full council by our elected members. And many thanks to councillor Peter Hiller. I think you've been doing this for eight years now, in terms of the awards. So actually, he's been actually chair of that panel. And also, we'll be introducing the chair of the panel and also the mayor, councillor Stephen Lane, he'll present the awards to each person tonight. So I'm going to hand over to Peter Hillier, who's going to go through the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening. Here we are again. Good evening. It's like seeing old friends, isn't it? Good evening. Good evening to you all. I'm pleased to bring out of retirement and welcome a lady known to most, if not all of you here this evening, a former PCC chief executive, Gillian Beazley, OBE, as Matt has already introduced, who has, like me, had the great pleasure to present these awards on every occasion since we first started them some years ago. This indeed, as Matt has said, it's our eighth year since we started these awards. And, oh, I don't know, it just wouldn't be the same without you, Gillian. So welcome, Gillian Beazley, welcome. Thank you. To the business in hand, the civic awards 2021. The following have been selected and honoured to receive a community involvement civic award. Mr Abdul Khan is nominated for his sterling work in the local community. Abdul has helped innumerable homeless and rough sleepers throughout his supported housing fellowship programme. He takes under his wing people who are homeless, furnishes the living spaces by relying on donations of furniture from the public, provides a haven of home space and comfort to these people, all in his own time, to assist in rehabilitating these residents and hopefully helping them to get jobs. Congratulations, Abdul. Thank you, David. Thank you, Abdul. Mrs Anne Dean. Anne's dedication throughout the pandemic, locally enabled blind and partially sighted people to continue to receive the talking newspaper. For many blind people, this is an important way of keeping in touch with local news. In normal times, blindness can often bring feelings of isolation to people, especially those living on their own. This was even more so in the pandemic. However, Anne's work meant that they were able to receive news in an easy and comfortable way, and also eased feelings of loneliness. Congratulations, Anne, and thank you very much for all your hard work. Congratulations, Anne. Congratulations, Anne. Thank you. Our next recipients are Jagdev Singh and Sitinda Panchi, whose work with the Bart's Seek Association has provided benefits to interfaith relations, fostering a sense of integration with other faiths and communities, benefiting environmental and climate change issues through their work in tree planting, together with their fundraising efforts for local charities. They also work hard with socially isolated residents through providing a social area for the elderly and frail to access. A big thank you for all your work. Thank you. Thank you again. Our fourth recipient for the community award this evening is Brenda and Martin Tibbles, whose work in running the East Bowls Club is recognised this evening. This community club enables residents across Peterborough to come and play grass bowls, particularly older residents, who come out to take part, who otherwise would be most likely to be at home and not seeing anyone from day to day. The social activities, the health and wellbeing, the importance of meeting each other, interacting and keeping fit, gives a real sense of community spirit and enjoyment. The Bowls Club also links with RNIB, who have started a group at the Green to enable our blind residents to take part in a sport with the support of Brenda and Martin, who ensure that the club keeps running for the benefit of all residents. Congratulations, Brenda and Martin. Congratulations again. Our fifth award is to Mrs Dorothy Halfhide. Wonderful surname, Halfhide. Dorothy is a stalwart of the thorny and greater Peterborough community. She is much more than a curator of the Thorny Museum. She is an integral member of the Thorny Society, helping it to uncover new interpretations of the parish's history. She also undertakes work with Thorny Abbey as she sings in the choir, whilst helping run and organising the Village Women's Institute group after breathing new life into their ranks, and is also an involved member of Thorny Parish Council. She even makes time to support and volunteer with Peterborough Food Bank, which is very important to so many people. Thank you to Dorothy. Thank you. You can cheer as well, that's no problem. There's lots of football things. You might upset David, he's of nervous disposition. Thank you, Dorothy. Erin Lee, who has almost single-handedly set up the Thorny Food Bank at the start of the pandemic. Erin's work has ensured that over 40 food parcels a week have been distributed to local residents. Her tireless work in engaging local residents and businesses has meant that many hours of selfless dedication and has resulted in an expansion of the food bank to cover other local communities. Congratulations, Erin. Very artistic of you, David. Splendid. GLADCA, an organisation known to many here, I'm sure. This community hub has been providing advice, signposting, referring and delivering educational services to the city of Peterborough for nearly 50 years. They made a positive contribution to the local communities and demonstrated exceptional community spirit through a variety of services. The community organisation extends a hand of welcome to people of all ages, gender, nationality, ability, culture, ethnicity and backgrounds. They deliver educational services, immigration advice, and enrichment activities such as yoga courses, flower arranging courses, sewing courses, coffee mornings and coach trips. In times of crisis, local organisations like GLADCA become hugely important and are the frontline for local communities. The city thanks the team at GLADCA. Thank you. Manji Iqbal and Rizwan Raham Tula. Now, I hope I pronounced your surnames correctly. I did practise this. Whose work with the Hussani Islamic Centre has ensured that the homeless in central Peterborough are fed and that charitable projects have been undertaken during the pandemic. The group's participation in promoting Covid testing and education on vaccines and cancer screening have been invaluable, as have their policies on safeguarding. This volunteer-led organisation always endeavours to co-relate with other communities across our multicultural city. Thank you to the Hussani Islamic Centre. Thank you. Apparently, my pronunciation was spot on. You'll be pleased to hear that. I'm certainly pleased to hear that. Mrs Jane Hale, whose tireless efforts with the Coats for Kids ensures that children whose parents might not be able to afford warm coats can benefit from donations from others. Having seen children walking to her local school without coats when it was cold, Jane was inspired to set up the charity to ask people to donate good quality used coats for distribution to children in need. A Facebook page allowed parents to privately message the group and ask if there were coats available in the sizes they needed for their own children. Jane works hard to raise the profile of the group and set up collection points for people to drop off their donations. Thank you so much, Jane, for your hard work. Thank you. Do we have Jane here this evening? Nope. She's probably out doing good work, I would imagine, judging by that. Thank you, Jane, anyway. I hope you're watching from outside. If you're watching virtually, Jane, on YouTube, I do express our sincere thanks for your hard work. Mrs Janet Hagan is number 10. Mrs Janet Hagan, who's decided that when the NHS was struggling in sourcing equipment during the pandemic, that she would get out her sewing machine to make scrubs for the NHS. Blimey. Janet never let her age stop her from helping others and in doing everything she could to help the NHS during this awful time. Janet had previously been assisting at a community cafe at the Iqbal Centre. A big thank you from all of us, Janet, for your helping hands during this very, very difficult time. Thank you, Janet. Thank you very much, Janet. Mr Joseph Dobson, whose contribution to the village of Helpstone is recognised. Joe has been a member of the parish council for over 25 years and chair for at least five years. He's been a significant, long-standing village resident and has supported a variety of village organisations, such as the Scouts and Guides, and kept a reasoned view on the development of the village. He helped set up community resources, such as the barn, and regularly attended meetings at the town hall on planning matters in particular. Congratulations on your award, Joe. Congratulations. No, Joe doesn't seem to be here this evening. So we will ensure that his award goes to the ward councillor, David Over, and then David can present in due course. Can you make that happen, Alex? Yes, thank you. I shall now hand over to our good friend, Mrs Gillian Beazley, OBE.
So, good evening, everyone. It's a great pleasure and a huge privilege to be here among so many fantastic people and to be allowed to actually give some awards out tonight as well. So I'll make a start. The first award that I'm going to present goes to Mr Keith Liversley. Keith has been a parish councillor for over 25 years and chair of other parish council for 10 years. A longstanding pillar of the community, his parish council activities have included safeguarding wildlife and protecting the countryside, including planting and the maintenance of the village's character. He has also preserved the redundant parish church and organised concerts, carol events and art collections, together with working hard to provide traffic calming for the village. Well done, Keith. Please come forward and get your award. The next award goes to Miss Nadia Abdurrahman. Nadia's contribution to both the Community and Thomas Deacon Academy is recognised. Nadia has voluntarily worked throughout the city on behalf of many charitable organisations, notably the Hussani Soup Kitchen, and she formed the Let's Make a Difference Group, who were formed when the Covid pandemic started, seeking to distribute hot meals to the homeless and vulnerable throughout the lockdown. She does so even to this day under the charitable organisation Eye Care. As a teacher at Thomas Deacon Academy, she has played a significant role in encouraging her students to do well in school by inviting motivational speakers in various areas to educate and motivate students. She goes over and above in her role as a teacher and is loved by her students. I'd just like to indulge me for one minute because her son is here tonight and it's his 16th birthday. Rushton, happy birthday. And I'd like now to invite your mother up. Nadia, would you like to come up? Happy birthday. Congratulations, Nadia. The next award goes to Peterborough Youth Council. This citywide youth voice group is made up of young people aged 11 to 19, with each school or college having two members. Supported by a youth voice worker from the city council, the members of the youth council themselves volunteer their time to ensure young people's views are represented and go above and beyond to ensure this happens and improve in the locality for all. Their work typically includes making Peterborough a supportive and inclusive city for the LGBTQ+ community and campaigning for improved transport infrastructure, such as more cycle paths to make the city more accessible for young people. They also tackle homelessness through their partnership with the Billy Chip Foundation and advocate for inclusive education through school assemblies and working with wider school communities. Thank you so much to Peterborough Youth Council. Would you come forward, please? So the next award goes to Harry Machin, Fay Bellam and Cat Elwell, Peaceborough Litter Wombles. As voluntary litter heroes, ambassadors for Keep Britain Tidy, Harry, Cat and Fay have individually and collectively worked with local litter picking groups since 2018 and earlier. Fay has been an active supporter of the Pride in the Autens. Harry regularly hosts Thorpe Gate River Care Litter Picks and Cat set up the Fletton Pickup Artists. In April 2021, they founded Peterborough Litter Wombles, whose Facebook group has more than 440 members. The group provides a platform to promote cleaning up Peterborough for existing groups to advertise their events and discuss the results and to recruit new members. They also help new groups to get started. To date, there are new or emerging groups in Welland, Dogsthorpe, Stanground and East Ward. They have been instrumental in setting up a litter partnership with the council and other community groups like Napibood Watch, Rotary, Peckt and others to address issues such as littering, fly tipping and prevention. Thank you so much, Harry, Fay and Cat, for what you've achieved. Please come forward for your award. The next award goes to Mr John Abbott, who works tirelessly in his local community and most days is seen picking up litter, clearing debris and rubbish from the local brook and regularly liaises with the council on matters such as defective street lighting, fly tipping, fallen trees and graffiti. John's an active member of the PE4 Wombles Group and makes sure that his community is a much better place for all residents to use green spaces and to live in. Congratulations, John, on your award. Would you please come forward? Amir Suliman, Faisal Mahmood, Safiya Howton and Akil Kahalil, collectively Salama Radio, have been pivotal in embracing the attributes of the Islamic faith and wanting to reach out to Peterborough's diverse communities through a range of volunteer presenters on various shows of varying subject matters that seek to educate, empower, integrate, tackle negative media, promote justice and equality, develop a thorough understanding of faith and their importance and relevance to the communities in Peterborough to promote peace and integration with all communities that reside in our city. That's Salama Radio, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please come forward for your award? Next is the Salvation Army Community Centre. This vital work carried out by volunteers and staff at the community centre is wide-ranging and ensures the residents across the city are helped via their luncheon club for elderly residents, drop-in centre for the homeless, distribution of food parcels and the Christmas Appeal and Luncheon, a more recent addition being the toddler group. Thank you so much for your dedication as a team and I know it's very much appreciated by the people who you help. The Salvation Army Community Centre, thank you. And would you please come forward? And would you please come forward? Keep up. Next is the World Cafe at Wellspring Church. In society, one of the most common problems is loneliness, especially for older residents. The team at the Alpha Centre have been spending time during the post-Covid helping people who are most alone most of the time by providing a cafe to get people that would otherwise just be sitting at home to get out and meet other people. In addition, they regularly visit people in their own homes to make sure they're okay and as someone who can sit and spend time over a cup of tea and a chat. They support people with lost family members and friends to help them get through those difficult times, helping to deal with grief when there is no one else to talk to. Thank you so much to the team at the World Cafe and would you please come forward to get your award? The next presentation is Sir Joshua Barnes. Joshua is an excellent example of how young people can help in communities. He is an extremely conscientious young man and cares passionately about his neighbourhood. He regularly brings issues to the notice of elected ward councillors and undertakes an extremely important and helpful role. We need more young people like Joshua, who himself has recently gone through some challenging health issues. A big thank you to Joshua for all his efforts. And Joshua, would you please come forward? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm going to hand over to Matt Ledstone.
Thank you, Gillian. The next award we're now looking at is around arts, culture and sport, something which is dear to my heart and actually gives a real sense of identity for the city. So I'll move on to the awards now. First one is Mr David Cramp. Picked up and ran with the Public Art and Animation Project on an entirely voluntary basis and managed to deliver programme events the like of which we had not seen previously in the city at all. At a time whenever he was busy with Covid recovery, he agreed to lead the public animation group. The project was able to secure Covid-19 recovery monies from the council and swiftly put together a programme of events in the city. These events have been absolutely crucial in helping to bring people back to the city. It's helped to attract revenue for local businesses and has helped to protect local jobs. Dave's role as Chair of the City Animation Steering Group has enabled this programme of events to happen. Dave's had a challenging job in bringing together diverse cultural and arts organisations and swiftly delivering a public animation programme for the city. Crucially, this has been in addition to his other commitments to the city. Congratulations, Dave, on your award. Khalid Jumvi has been at the forefront of Urdu news broadcasting for many years within the city in a voluntary capacity. He's pioneered news broadcasting in the Urdu language for the people within the city of Peterborough. He has covered news in the Urdu language at all city-based as a means to provide an update to residents who have English as a second language so they are fully informed of the major events, particularly as what we're seeing at the moment within the city. And this has contributed enormously to information around Covid-19. He has interviewed and covered pertinent news and should really be considered a key frontline worker, often risking his own safety at arriving at site during many incidents and events, showing information about the frontline of NHS and their contribution and in particular the state of the city during the pandemic. He's looked at the hospital circumstances and the centres where the vaccine can be accessed and he is a true ambassador for our city in the real sense. Congratulations, Khalid. Mr Paul Stainton has been a broadcaster for 30 years. He has worked for local radio, the BBC, and has established his own media firm, PS Media, where he covers all that is related to the city. His ability to make people smile, gain their views about current affairs within the city and I think bring a different style to media broadcasting, making him a very well-known and popular name within the city. He has kept us entertained with his wit and humour throughout the lockdown and has kept spirits high and bright. He's focused in particular around the social isolated. He's engaged with them and it's hands down to his most energetic, happy style and broadcaster in terms of his skill set to bring positivity to every subject that he works on. Congratulations, Paul. Our contribution to the environment award this evening is awarded to David Luendan. David has been employed by Aragon for over 23 years, working on the frontline, undertaking various street cleansing roles. For the past 10 years, he's been based in the city centre and forms part of the key team that operates seven days a week, keeping the city centre clean. But David is much more than just a street care operative. He diligently goes about his work in an extremely professional manner. It's his friendly, welcoming approach and presence which is always there to advise, assist and help city centre visitors that makes him really stand out. He conducts himself in such a way that not only portrays himself in a positive light, but truly reflects well on Aragon and on the city and is a true ambassador for the city. He serves his residents well, so well done, David, and many congratulations. Well done, David. Our sports award this evening is awarded to Farida Bibi, a teacher at the Beaches Primary School. Farida has promoted coaching sports, particularly cricket, very successfully. And at summer cricket competitions, the Beaches School boys' and girls' team have become county champions more than any other school. Fantastic effort. They have represented the county at regional and national level several times. Since 2019, Farida has been volunteering to coach cricket to Asian Muslim children, particularly girls, overcoming religious and cultural barriers. She was also the first Asian Muslim Kashmiri woman to play women's county cricket and has also, for the last decade in my understanding, has represented Northamptonshire Women's Countryside. So many congratulations, Farida. I also met the mosque liaison group the other day and they're trying to adjust to cricket match, so I might be asking for some assistance and skills and played cricket for a few years. So well done, many congratulations. Well done, Farida. I'm now going to hand over to Peter to go for the business awards.
Thank you, Matt. Our business category this evening is awarded to Mark Broadhead, known to many of us here, I'm sure. Mark is the centre director of the Queensgate Shopping Centre, which is responsible for the major footfall and spending within the city of Peterborough. He also acts as Chair of the Peterborough Positive Steering Group, the trading name for Peterborough Business Improvement District, responsible for bidding for investment into the city. Mark has pulled together companies who are committed to improving the city centre and works tirelessly, basing his previous knowledge on bids. He's also nominated for his work during Covid-19 pandemic in working with the council, working with the council to help and assist businesses that have been affected. A big thank you to Mark and congratulations. Thank you. Mark Broadhead, thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Our civic awards for lifetime achievement are tonight awarded to Edward Elwood. Edward has served the residents of Southorp for all of his working life and during the last 35 years has played an active role in the parish council until he finally stepped down in 2021, last year. The Elwood family are synonymous with Southorp over and above parish council duties. Edward has supported the village's social activities, working on village field to ensure that amongst many other events, the annual bonfire display and the village picnic could proceed. He also worked on many practical tasks such as communal grass-cutting around the village and always wore a very trusty smile. The village owes Edward a debt of gratitude for his selfless and willing support over many, many years and he has been the catalyst for helping to ensure a strong sense of community in the village. Congratulations, Edward. Thank you, Edward. Harry Brassie. Harry, who retired in May last year from Barnock Parish Council, served as a councillor for 43 years. He was first elected in July 1978. He was chairman of Barnock Parish Council from 2014 to 2021, when he retired. During his tenure as chairman, he led Barnock Parish Council with wisdom and assurance. He earned the respect of both the council and the residents of the parish. Harry's total commitment and dedication to the parish council's work and the welfare of residents was limitless. He personally carried out many of the tasks needed to maintain and improve our villages, from installing sanitizers in the bus shelters to erecting the Christmas tree in the square. As chairman, he has worked tirelessly towards installing traffic calming measures, made sure that planning proposals were thoroughly considered and ensured that the parish council's income was wisely spent. Harry has used his knowledge of the locality with great effect. Barnock has grown in size substantially over the last few years. But Harry has recognised the need for growth but has balanced that against a commitment to ensure that the character and appeal of our villages and countryside endure. Congratulations, Harry. Congratulations, Harry. Dawn Hughes, Debbie Dearden, Jane Lloyd, Julie Ackroyd, Julie Cox, Sally Stainton-Roberts and Sandra Bond are from Warrington Girl Guiding. All of these ladies have given many years of tireless service working with young girls to ensure, through weekly sessions, that a positive impact is made on them and underlining the core message of Girl Guiding to make a difference to the communities they serve. This group is a perfect example of this message. They ensure that the girls who attend are equipped with essential skills for their futures and a knowledge of the world around them. The girls are taught not only to accept differences but to embrace and celebrate them. Most importantly, the weekly sessions provide fun and friendship and the group organise many residential trips and camps for the girls, ensuring experiences that many may not be able to experience without this support. A truly well-deserved award for all of you. Congratulations. Well done, ladies. Wide angle, David. There's plenty here. I said that without fear or favour. Well done, ladies. Fantastic organisation, it really is. Okay, that is that for the civic awards this evening. We now have the second part of our awards this evening. Moving on to the Honorary Alderman and Freedom of the City. Honorary Alderman Awards for 2021 were all agreed at the full council and are awarded this evening to former councillors, Christopher Ash, David Seaton, Diane Lamb and Darren Fowler. Unfortunately, not all are here this evening and we will ensure that each receive their award. Here this evening is Christopher Ash, better known as Chris Ash, our former mayor, here in front of me this evening. Good evening, Chris. He served as a respected councillor for Dogsthorpe Ward from May 1986 until May 1994 and subsequently from May 2000 until May 2021. During his terms of office, he served on many committees, including corporate parenting, licensing, strong and supportive committees, scrutiny and planning review, along with serving on neighbourhood committees too. He served as our deputy mayor in 2017, 2018 and undertook the role of Peterborough's first citizen, the right worshipful, the mayor of the city of Peterborough, in 2018, 19. The Award of Status of Honorary Alderman is awarded to Chris Ash in recognition of his renowned service to this council and to this great city and is very, very well deserved. Congratulations, Chris. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you, Chris, for the service that you've given this city. We now move on to our Freedom of the City awards and the first is awarded to the Peterborough branch of the Royal British is awarded to the Peterborough branch of the Royal British Legion. In May nineteen twenty-one, over a hundred years ago, the British Legion was formed, bringing together four national organisations of ex-servicemen that had established themselves to support those who had suffered as a result of service during the First World War. The Peterborough branch was formed a month later on the twenty-seventh of June and for a hundred consecutive years has been supporting the local armed forces community, remembering those who have served and sacrificed during two world wars and subsequent conflicts. The key moment for the branch was the opening ceremony of the clubhouse at Thorpe Lawn in nineteen twenty-one. General Lord Horn cut barbed wire to enter the club with cutters that were used through the war by generals strong. Lord Horn praised the Northamptonshire fighting men for their spirit and encouraged the public to support the club and the British Legion. One of the highlights of the branch's history was the opening of the Hag Hall on the sixth of March nineteen thirty-one. And this building exists today and is home to Peterborough City College with a memorial stone placed in the foyer, representing and referencing the building's origins. Over the years, the branch has contributed towards four war memorials. The first was the Peterborough and District War Memorial Hospital that opened in nineteen twenty-eight. The second memorial was on Bridge Street and was in use from nineteen eighty-six until nineteen ninety-five, when it was replaced by the third memorial located on the north side of the cathedral grounds. In two thousand and twelve, the branch raised funds for the construction of the current war memorial on Bridge Street. This memorial is in a prominent position and is the one used today by the branch and the local community to commemorate anniversaries and remember all those who served and sacrificed to defend our freedom. It has become the centrepiece for civic occasions. The Royal British Legion is the custodian of remembrance and is best known for its annual poppy appeal. In recent years, branch members have managed to increase the amount of funds raised to support the poppy appeal and in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, they raised an incredible one hundred and forty-one thousand pounds. Over the years, the branch has been extremely fortunate to have lots of dedicated volunteers. A tribute should be paid to all of them this evening. The logistical challenges are huge, but they are ultimately raising funds for the welfare of our servicemen and women and veterans. The branch is always represented at civic occasions for Remembrance Day, VE Day and VJ Day. But as you would expect, Peterborough has a couple of unique events that attract attention from outside the city. Indeed, one of them from the other side of the world. Among those remembered is the lonely Anzac Sergeant Hunter, an Australian soldier who was neither born nor lived in Peterborough. But after being injured during World War One, he sadly died in the area in nineteen sixteen and is buried in the Broadway Cemetery. The branch also remembers the role that animals played during the Great War, with Jimmy the donkey buried in Central Park. Jimmy, a decorated donkey, was born on the Somme. He was retired to Peterborough after the war and was loved by soldiers as well as civilians. In recognition of the above, we do hereby confer the Honorary Freedom of the City upon the Royal British Legion Peterborough branch of Peterborough. And can I ask Major Elsie to come to the stage and collect the award? Thank you. Mr Mayor, with your permission, can I invite councillor Graham Casey to the stage in his capacity of Chair of the Royal British Legion to present two awards to Mr and Mrs Wilson? And he has his own words, I believe. Yes Graham? Thank you. Graham Casey.
Thank you very much councillor Hiller. Now, we have two members this evening who've driven a very long way to this evening's awards event and they've got no idea that they're here to receive awards from the National Chairman of the British Legion as well. Now, I haven't got a prepared speech, but Major Elsie is going to present these awards to them. And perhaps are you going to say a few words about them? Yes.
You can never stop a lawyer speaking. Ladies and gentlemen, and Mr Mayor, I suppose one of the advantages of having the Freedom of the City is we can commandeer this sort of occasion. As Graham, our chairman, has said, two people are here, they've travelled a long way to receive the most prestigious awards that the Royal British Legion can give to any of its members. Like most organisations, we have branch level awards, we have county level awards and then some of them have to go all the way to London to be approved by headquarters there. And quite rightly and quite properly, the gold awards are going to be presented to Margaret and Gerry Wilson. You may have gathered they're married. Margaret and Gerry have served this branch faithfully for a number of decades. I'm not going to embarrass Margaret by saying how long, but they've been on the committee. Gerry has been treasurer, always a thankless task in any organisation, but he's done that diligently. And also, they have been the pinnacle of our remembrance occasions because they were our standard bearers. And as you've already heard, the core issue for the Royal British Legion is the remembrance of those men and women who have served this country, both from here and from abroad and out the dominions. Remembering them for the sacrifices they made in life, limb and mental health. And so their presence at each of our occasions, carrying the standards and being, as I say, at the forefront and the pinnacle of what we were doing, has been vitally important and has made you recognise who they are. Now, therefore, I'm not going to embarrass them any further. I'm simply going to say, Margaret and Gerry, I have already, on a number of occasions, privately thanked you for your services and your support to me as your president, which has been absolutely, dare I use the word legion. Thank you very much indeed and will you please come forward and receive your awards? Now those are the certificates. I am told that each of your gold awards has your name on the back, but unfortunately I haven't got my reading glasses on, so you can sort that out later. Thank you so much for everything you've done for this group.
Major Elsie, would you come and stand down?
I know my place.
Now you're all the same heart. Oh, just hold your awards up so we can see them. Well done. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're now coming to the final award of the evening. The final award of the evening, last but certainly, most certainly not least. Mrs Gillian Beasley, OBE. There aren't many people I can think of who could eclipse or even match the contribution that Gillian Beasley has made to our city. She's dedicated most of her life to public service in a career spanning just short of forty years. I know that's difficult to believe, isn't it? Must have started soon as you left school. Almost half of which she's been at the helm of Peterborough City Council. As those who know Gillian will vouch, her role as Chief Executive has been more, so much more than a day job. Her life's work for our city and her passion for Peterborough's diverse population has made this place a better place. She became Chief Executive of the council in two thousand and two, but her career began up north two decades prior as a trainee lawyer with Leeds City Council in nineteen eighty-three. Over the next ten years, she worked with the government on the Children's Act nineteen eighty-nine and gave her time pro bono with the National Council for Disabled Children and for the National Children's Bureau. She also trained thousands of lawyers in children's law for the Law Society. In nineteen eighty-nine, Gillian joined Cambridgeshire County Council as an assistant solicitor in the child protection team and went on to become principal solicitor for child protection and then head of legal services for the whole council. A role she held until she left in nineteen ninety-seven to join Peterborough City Council as Director of Law and Administration. In that role, she was responsible for setting up the new constitutional arrangements when the city council split from Cambridgeshire to become the unitary authority it is now. In two thousand, she was appointed Director of the Environment and Legal Services and then in two thousand and two, she was successful in her application to be our Chief Executive. Thirteen years later, she was appointed Chief Executive of Cambridgeshire County Council, making hers the first shared role for two principal councils in the country. During her career, Gillian has advised government on children's law, migration impacts, government housing and cohesion, and has served on various commissions in this regard. She also led on complex child sexual exploitation cases which helped inform and shape local government practice in this area. As Chair of a national charity, Unitas, she helped young people access and progress in the mainstream education and training through involvement with the arts. Furthermore, she was influential in negotiating with the government on the setting up of the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Combined Authority. The transformation that Peterborough has undergone in recent years is clear for all to see. We're sitting in it now. And Gillian has played a key role in that process. She's spent considerable time building relationships with organisations, groups and individuals in our city and has always championed and supported the many different faiths and cultures that exist. She's gone out of her way to understand and become part of our diverse communities and for example, has fasted during Ramadan, celebrated Diwali and the five hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Guru Nanak Dev Jai's birth, taken part in pride events and raised awareness of the injustices faced by the Windrush generation. In two thousand and sixteen, she abseiled a hundred and fifty feet down the side of our beautiful cathedral as part of the Peterborough's nine hundred campaign, helping raise thousands of pounds to improve facilities for visitors and worshippers at the cathedral, leading up to its nine hundredth anniversary in two thousand and eighteen. Whilst often unassuming in demeanour, she is undoubtedly a woman of profound influence in Peterborough, inspiring young and not so young people from all backgrounds to overcome prejudice and social barriers, to achieve, to excel and to reach the very top of their professions. In two thousand and nineteen, Gillian received an OBE in the Queen's New Year's honours list for services to local government. She also holds an honorary doctorate in business administration from Anglia Ruskin University and is a Fellow of the Royal Society of Arts. Gillian has dedicated her whole life to public service and spent her career working and excelling in many local government roles, helping to make real difference to so, so many people. In recognition of the above, we do hereby confer the Honorary Freedom of the City upon Gillian Beasley, OBE of Peterborough. Thank you. Welcome Gillian. Gillian Beasley, OBE. Missed but not forgotten. Well done Gillian. Well, that's it for the evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you've enjoyed our eighth annual civic awards, I hope sincerely. And I'll be having conversation with Matt, who's in control, that we have a civic award session for next year too. And full details, if indeed we do have another awards ceremony, I'm sure we will, the details of how to nominate people, how to apply will be posted on Peterborough City Council website and indeed in the media. So look forward to seeing that. Before we finish, everybody that's actually got an award this evening, could I ask you to go down to the bottom of the engine shed here for a group photograph? That would be absolutely wonderful. And if people didn't know, actually this is the old engine shed for Peterborough East Railway Station. So just a minute. Thank you very much indeed and good evening.